Okay, good morning, everyone, and welcome. We're glad to have you with us today. And this is the call to order for the Buncombe County Planning Board on July the 17th, 2023 at 9:30 a.m. We have a few brief announcements to start with. One is to the Planning Board. We have one resignation. Cindy Weeks has turned in her resignation due to family life, personal issues. So we will be looking for a replacement for Cindy, unfortunately. And I'd like to also share, just for general notice, the protocol for our public comment hearing periods, a brief version of those. The general public comment will be taken at the end of every Planning Board meeting. In addition, Agenda items specific public comment will be taken as part of any public hearing for both text and map amendments. Speakers wishing to address the board in public comment must sign up on the sheet provided by the planning staff, if there's anyone with us today that wants to do that. Speakers will be called in the order they are signed up. Comments should be limited to specific comments relevant to the Planning Board. At the board's discretion, limited comment may also be allowed on individual Agenda items during the course of the meeting as instructed by the chair. And all public comment will be limited to three minutes per individual. And that will dispense with that for this morning. And now we need to have the roll call of board members.
Nancy Waldrop here. Billy Taylor.
Here.
Mike Fisher.
Here.
Alan Coxey.
Here.
John Noor.
Here.
Mike Fisher.
Here.
Thank you.
You missed me.
Oh, Ken Cox.
Yeah.
Very good. All right. Next, we need to have the approval of the agenda for today.
It's approved.
It's approved.
And, okay? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the agenda is approved. And next, we need the approval of the minutes from the May 5th special meeting.
It's approved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then minutes are approved. And then the first item we need to discuss is S U B 2022-00368, Pinners Cove, for a Planning Board review of a proposal by American Land Trust to hold a conservation easement in the Pinners Cove subdivision as required by Section 7068 by the Buncombe County Land Development and Subdivision Ordinance.
So I'll just note before I start on staff presentation that we are live on Facebook now. And we'll be in for future Planning Board meetings. The county as a whole is trying to get all our public meetings and our boards and our commissions on Facebook Live. So if you can't make it to the meeting, you can see what's happening while it's going on. So y'all are famous now. So I don't know if you want to be famous, but you're Facebook famous now. So this is the Pinners Cove subdivision, and it has actually already been granted preliminary approval. It is 266 units. And as part of using the conservation easement option within the Hillside Development section of the subdivision ordinance, there is one thing that the Planning Board has to do, and it is 7068G is the section. And what you are required to do as the Planning Board is the proposed holder of conservation easement shall be stated on the submitted subdivision plans, which they are, and shall be approved by the Buncombe County Planning Board. So that is why we are here. They've been granted preliminary approval. They're currently under stormwater review. But one of the things they need to do before they move forward is get that approval of the, not the development, but the land trust that is holding the 107, 106, I was plus 106 acre conservation easement. So if you guys don't have any questions about the preliminary approval or this process or the, you know, the subdivision itself, I'll turn it over to the applicant so they can make their presentation.
Okay. Any questions?
You did say it's a preliminary staff review based on some conditions.
They actually have preliminary approval. So that's sort of the first step in the whole development process. And this is a condition, you know, they have, they have standard, anything related to design in the subdivision ordinance has been addressed, but they have conditions like, give me a copy of your N C D O T driveway permit, your water and sewer engineer certification when those, those things are built, those sort of conditions, and that this is one of those conditions.
And this is approval zone based on current statute and asking for an exemption.
It's not asking for exemption. It's the current statute within the subdivision ordinance.
My question is, what is the standard for our review?
The ordinance is basically, it seems like you do a review and it says that, that the proposed holder of the conservation shall be stated on this submitted subdivision plan and shall be approved by the Buncombe County Planning Board. Does not give you a specific standards that you are looking for in terms of approval. I assume that as long as there are no errors, that, that it would be, this is more of an administrative approval than anything else. As the statute, there are no standards for you to.
No spelled out elements. Do you read that Kurt is sort of, we're approving the conservation entity, sort of like that's what we're looking at, not the project, but the entity that would hold the easement, sort of as to their, the quality of their ability to be an easement holder kind of thing versus other options?
Well, once again, the statute, you know, I can only tell you what to build by the statute and not to read anything else into that. But it just basically states that the proposed holder of the conservation is established, shall be stated on the subdivision plan. I would assume that as long as it's about a corporation and/or whoever's holding it, that there's nothing that would prevent it from doing that. I don't see any other standards that you would go by.
Thank you.
Do you have a copy of that statute for us to look at? I think this is the first time that we've had this come up since I've been on the board.
It is a fairly long statute. We can't print it out and get you a copy of that, or would you like just the copy of the section?
I'd like to print out the whole thing online. This is the first time we've encountered this. I think it's that would help us refer to that.
Do you want me to do that?
Yeah. I was gonna try to pull it up for them.
Oh, okay.
Hard to read online.
Yeah, all right. I hear you.
I can pull it up.
That's fine, too. Frank Cox will help you. If we received any handouts on this particular thing, I will do the packet.
I think the applicant has some information for you that they're gonna put up together.
Okay, thank you.
Should we go ahead and hear from the applicant while we're waiting, or do you want to? Okay. Then would the applicant like to come forward?
Yes, please.
My name is Derek Allen. I'm a public supporter, I represent the applicant. We also have American Land Trust here. I think that's really the focus should be, listen to my questions.
Standard? What do we need to show and what's being reviewed? I do have some materials that summarize the points that I think are relevant today. If I can approach, hand these up.
And staff's exactly right on this. This project is an as of right project, started approved. The tools that we've been using have kept us very much in close contact with staff. It is a detailed subdivision ordinance that encourages clustering to protect environmentally sensitive areas and encourages and requires that in using these tools, that a qualifying land trust be the recipient of the conservation easement. Here, the conservation easement is nearly 107 acres, and we have chosen North American Land Trust. Our focus has been making sure that it is a company that has good qualifications and one that staff would want to work with from a county standpoint. We asked for recommendations from staff. They gave us two. Those two, in turn, referred us to North American Land Trust. And I'll let them speak to their qualifications, but the big parts for us are their 501(c)(3). They currently protect more than 138,000 acres in conservation easements, 600, more than 600 conservation easements across 24 states. In North Carolina, they've got 22,500 acres across 26 counties, including almost 300 acres already in Buncombe County. Obviously, the conservation easement will be permanently de-restricted. That's part of the requirements. And again, I think, not think, I'm certain that the consideration today is whether this is a qualifying land trust capable of receiving that conservation easement as part of this project, not the project itself. We're happy to answer any questions about either, however, we do have members of our development team as well as North American Land Trust. I would ask them to come up now and introduce themselves and subject themselves to any questions you might have.
Could I ask an initial question? Do you have a proposed map of the proposed easement that you're looking at right now
Give me a second.
Okay.
In the meantime, my name is Sonia Beddoe. I am in-house counsel for the developer, and I'm just gonna provide kind of some very high-level information. So the site is 170 acres total. The use of the Hillside subdivision is allowing us to cluster the homes, that's 266 homes, onto about 42 acres. Then the remaining acres will remain, will be undeveloped. 100 and, almost 107 of them will be subject to the conservation easement. The part of the property that is subject to the conservation easement is the much more environmentally sensitive area of the property, hillsides, undeveloped forest area, as opposed to the portion of the site that we are building on, much of which has already been cleared and used in the past. So that, you know, we're very excited about the idea of being able to preserve so much of the most beautiful portion of the site. It will have approximately three miles of recreational trails. None of those will be paved, though all be impervious for use by walking and biking. No A T Vs, nothing like that. The, we are working with a local trail design company, which is helping us to figure out the best place to put the trails using existing kind of cow trails and the existing elevation and things like that to really maximize the ability of people to appreciate the beauty of the area, but also minimize our impact to it. And we have been and will continue to be working with N A L T to make sure that everything we're doing is in line with the conservation goals of the, of the easement. We did originally start working with a land trust that was recommended by city staff and got a ways down the road with them. I believe they got some political pushback from some loud neighbors about it, and they were sort of put off by that and not willing to proceed on that. They are the ones who recommended N A L T to us. And so we have been working with N A L T now for a while. N A L T has sent out, one of the gentlemen here who is, has created a baseline report, which, you know, sort of surveys that area, what's there, you know, vegetation, animals, waterways, things like that, so that then they are able to have that to look back on for the next thousand years that this is subject to an easement and to be able to gauge what has changed. We are really excited to work with them as a partner on continuing to improve the area for conservation purposes, making sure that we're, you know, not removing any live trees unless there's some sort of a pine beetle situation or something, and N A L T is telling us we should do that. It's, it's kind of, we're very excited about the partnership and being able to have this guidance on how to really maximize preserving the space in perpetuity as a beautiful, beautiful resource that now will never be developed. Thank you.
One question.
Thank you.
For the, for the portion of the overall track that's gonna be developed.
Yes.
Where will the sewer line go?
That's a great question. So given the proximity to existing sewer lines, it was not feasible to use a gravity-fed sewer line at this point to go essentially down the hill. So the sewer line will be put in going up the hill. That's the closest connection. And the intention with that is, and we, we had some, we worked closely with city staff and with N A L T to figure out, you know, if the sewer line has to go through there, should it be part of the easement area and then carve out our, our ability to put the sewer line in there and to do any necessary repairs and things like that? Does that make the most sense? Or does it make sense to exempt it from what is covered by the easement? And determined with all of the input that it makes the most, most sense to exempt it from the easement area. The intention is that when the existing infrastructure south of the property, down the hill, is extended far enough for other developments that it is then possible for us to connect in there, we would connect into that system and decommission the sewer line going up the hill.
Why is it not possible to go ahead and connect into the lower existing Pinners Cove sewer line if that's your ultimate intention to do that in the first one?
So, oh, Gillian may be able to answer that.
So just to note, there is no sewer line on Pinners Cove.
There is no sewer line on.
Okay. There is one much farther away on Mills Gap Road, but it is, has not extended to the Pinners Cove area.
So there's absolutely no portion of sewer line on Pinners Cove? Thank you. That's a decent project that has never been brought to our attention. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I've got one follow-up question, or it might be two. So who was the first land trust you were working with?
The first land trust that we were working with was Conserving Carolinas.
Okay. And there's some reason for not taking it was what you classified as sort of political pressure?
Yeah, I, you know, my understanding of it, based on conversations with them, was that they had been getting some contact from people who did not want the project to be built, a limited amount of people, but loud enough that they really kind of shied away from not, they didn't want to get involved in the crosshairs.
But there was no reason other than that that was articulated for not taking it?
Not that I'm aware of, no. I mean, we did also, I should say, we did also reach out to a few other land trusts. And several land trusts were not really interested in the conservation easement because of the size. They are more interested in taking 1,000 acres. And this is sort of, you know, you, any land trust that isn't already established in this area, like N A L T is with already having several easements here, I think, would be a challenge for someone to come in to the area, not having worked here, and then for just 107 acres, it's sort of, that's not significant enough. Does that make sense? Yeah.
One follow-up question.
Yeah.
If this two-step thing where you would use the upper path for a sewer easement, and then later on, if a sewer line was added to Pinners Cove Road, you would connect to the Pinners Cove and abandon the open mountain portion of that, is that documented or will it be documented in the easement that's reported in Buncombe County?
I don't believe that it is in the easement. I think that.
You said you were looking at sewer piece out, so.
Yeah. You know, I don't believe that it's documented in the easement itself. We have worked with M S D on it, and my assumption, having no civil engineering expertise at all, is that we would, you know, if the, if a sewer line gets closer, we would be eager to connect into it because it would be cheaper to, rather than continue to maintain, you know, the system of pumping all of the sewage uphill, which is what this line is gonna require.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And a little further, we do have an agreement with M S D in terms of the approval, and that is referenced inside of that agreement with, without entity.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any other things that you can present to the board? I have to get it. Okay.
I have a separate paper, not to be confused with the same title. When I'm handing out the statement of qualification from the land trust. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right. My name's Stephen Carter. I'm the president of North American Land Trust. N A L T is a 501(c)(3) conservation charity headquartered in Chad'sford, Pennsylvania, which is just outside of Philadelphia. Our mission is the permanent conservation and stewardship of our natural and cultural resources through innovative land preservation projects. N A L T is a national land trust currently operational in 24 states. Our professional team manages over 600 individual conservation easements, accounting for over 138,000 acres of protected land. And although we're a national land trust, N A L T has always maintained a strong base of operations right here in North Carolina, having taken our first conservation easement in coastal Brunswick County in 1997. To date, our professional staff manages over 120 conservation easements in North Carolina, spread across 28 counties, accounting for over 22,500 acres of protected land. We're quite proud of our accomplishments here in Buncombe County, which include the Stone Weather Conservation Easement, 177-acre property situated on the banks of the French Broad River. This property is now owned by another North Carolina nonprofit, the Big Creek Wildlife Foundation, and is open for public access. This property has also been the site, hosted other local land trusts, including Conserving Carolina, who you heard earlier, who's linked up with N A L T staff to conduct nature walks on the property. There's also the conservation easements at the settings at Black Mountain, a residential conservation community not so dissimilar from Pinners Cove. N A L T staff enjoys regular engagement with the Black Mountain community, not only ensuring compliance with the terms and conditions of the conservation easement, but hosting regular conservation lectures and nature walks on the property. N A L T has a long history partnering with municipalities, government agencies, and the real estate community to help effectuate balanced and meaningful project outcomes. We believe the Pinners Cove project matched with Buncombe County's Hillside Development Ordinance is another good example of that. By protecting the properties, by, through the permanent conservation and stewardship of the property's southern Appalachian oak forests that provide critical habitat for iconic native species such as the American black bear, the bobcat, and pink lady slipper, N A L T's public conservation mission will be advanced and Buncombe County's ordinance satisfied. I'll conclude by quickly mentioning the strength and experience of N A L T's monitoring and stewardship program. It's no small task monitoring 600 conservation easements across the country, but we take this commitment seriously and have the resources to maintain an annual policy of annually monitoring all of our conservation easements. I'm quite proud of our efforts in this regard and our low rate of compliance issues, which I think speaks to my staff's focus on building positive landowner relationships rather than over emphasizing our supervisory role. I'm joined today by my colleague, Will Gandy, who is N A L T's Southeast Conservation Manager, and also a proud resident of East Asheville, right? Will has been with North American Land Trust for over a decade now and manages all of our work in western North Carolina. We're very fortunate to have his talents and experience on staff, particularly in a state where we're so very active. I'll stop there and see if you have any questions. Appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today.
I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Mostly to educate me. I noted that Charity Navigator, I don't know if they are the most credible source of ratings, but.
They're a resource, yeah.
Pretty good. They, they do not, they give you a 60% rating, two-star rating. Almost all their stuff is great, except for the accountability and finance. I don't know enough to understand why that might be. There must be some reasons why a land trust organization might not fit their definition of accountability and finance criteria. I wonder if you would speak to that.
I can't speak to how they grade. I don't know the exact process. What I can tell you is that we do file a public Form 990 every year, which describes all of our functions financially and operations. We make that form available, and I'm happy to make that form available to you. I'm not sure if Charity Navigator is not getting that form maybe, and that's why they're grading us that way. I haven't kept up, so I apologize. I don't have a great answer for you there, other than we are transparent with our operations and our financials and happy to make that information available at any time. You're welcome.
And I'm assuming that the funds that's gonna get this started is coming from y'all, or y'all get donations to?
We do, yes. So the developer that we work with would be funding the project.
And then y'all still keep up on the maintenance of the trails and stuff?
In perpetuity.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Y'all had, you mentioned compliance issues that you were, do you have any ongoing investigations or other type inquiries into your, either tax write-offs or anything like that?
As an organization? No, we're not under investigation at any time. When I talked about compliance, I was talking more about our monitoring conservation easements and our landowners. We don't have, we do have those happen from time to time, but we try to not litigate. It's really about trying to find a compromise if there is an issue. You know, that's not our mission, is to litigate, it's to preserve land, so we want to stay out of court if possible. No problem.
I would request a copy of your Form 990, and my question would be, have you encountered many easements like this where you have a uphill sewer line that essentially divides the easement in half? And do you anticipate this uphill pumped sewer line to have any impact or negative impact on your management of the easement?
No, we've evaluated that issue. These kinds of amenities for developments associated with a conservation project are not unusual. They do happen. It's really about the design and the impact. As Gillie, excuse me, as Sunny described, we did look at this carefully and decided that the best approach would be to, to not encumber that area with the conservation easement so they could do the regular maintenance on that area. But it's a small linear area, and we don't think impacts the, the conservation values of the property in a significant way.
And it is your understanding and your workable operation that at some point that'll be abandoned in favor of a downhill gravity connection?
That's my understanding. Again, that area is not encumbered by the conservation easement, so that wouldn't necessarily be written into that document. We could talk about that if that's, you know, a sticking point, but.
No, I guess my question is, at some point, if that line was abandoned, would that small track through the middle of your easement then roll in and become part of the easement?
Oh, we would encourage our developer friends to do that, of course, yes. Very much, yeah.
Do you have an understanding as to whether that will occur?
We've not talked about that specific issue, no. I was unaware that there might be an alternative to that, so to the extent that there is, we would very much welcome the opportunity to encumber that area and make that part of the easement.
Is it your understanding that this big long track through the middle of the conservation easement is that sewer line?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So having that easement at some point down the road would combine all of your easement into one track?
Yes, sir.
Correct?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd just like to say how nice I think it is that you're putting the trails in there for the, for the community.
Is that something that happens all the time when you do these kind of?
We try to encourage that, to really, that's the developer who came up with that before we even got involved. This was something that they were committed to in terms of monetizing their community. It's really important to do that, to be able to not only protect the property and the natural resources that are there, but to create an opportunity for the community that's right there to enjoy it and educate and see what it's all about. So I'd like to take credit for that, but it was really them that initiated that, so, yeah. One interesting feature is the property is next to the Givens Estates property. We've not opened up this discussion, but they have over, I believe, five, five miles of trails on their property that come right up close to the Penner's Cove property. So we've had some preliminary discussions with our friends to maybe see if there's a possible connection there. That's the kind of influence that we want to try to bring to the table when we work on our projects. I don't know if, you know, we can go there yet. We've not approached that, but there's those kinds of connection opportunities which are really important.
Well, just out of curiosity, is that, are those trails just for the community?
They would be in this case. Again, it's really a matter of context, you know, to have a full public trail system, you're going to need infrastructure, parking lots, that kind of thing. So it's not really set up for that. I don't think my developer friends are opposed to that necessarily. It's just its context and the property is not necessarily set up for that at this point in time.
Thank you. I was just curious.
No problem.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
No, just one comment, and it's mainly addressed to staff. I've asked a lot of questions about this uphill pumped sewer line. I just favor those kind of arrangements for development. The reason I do is, as defense counsel for an insurance company, I had an opportunity to represent in litigation where a uphill pumped sewer line failed. The pipe failed and the pump continued and it destroyed a massive piece of property in a county adjacent to Buncombe County. And I was involved in litigation with that. I understand now that there is no sewer line on Penner's Cove. This is the first time I've ever heard of that, so prior to just today, I was under the impression that this Penner's Cove development could connect to an existing sewer line on Penner's Cove, but chose not to and chose the over the mountain route. Now that I understand there is no existing sewer line on Penner's Cove, I would hope that going forward with future projects, you'll work with MSD to consider extensions of sewer lines from Mills Gap Road to Penner's Cove. I would think that would be preferable than a over the mountain positive pressure pump station. Having seen the failure and having done the settlement on that piece of property, I think that is a really risky endeavor and I appreciate in-house councils pointing out that down the road, it would be their preference to abandon that towards a more gravity fed situation as well. And that's just comments for the staff.
Do we have a copy of the easement text?
So, not yet. They are, they would have to provide that to county prior to the creation of the easement. You are simply approving North American Land, North American Land?
North American Land Trust, yes.
American Land Trust holding the easement.
And. Well, maybe I can ask some extra questions. I mean, what I'm trying to understand is what, well, what kind of development would be allowed in the conservation easement area?
What kind of development?
Since I don't have the text, to understand what the restrictions would be.
Probably a question for.
I could answer.
Go ahead, thank you.
It's basically none. Aside from the trails, which again have to be pervious, and a minimal, a minimal things like if there's a, like, stream that has to be crossed, we can put in a footbridge. You know, I think it allows for some benches for people to take breaks on. We looked at maybe having a small kind of picnic area up there, which would not involve any pervious service or any impervious surface, anything like that. But generally speaking, really no development is allowed in the conservation area beyond the, just the trails. Yeah. I also have a few other follow up items that I can kind of weigh in on. We haven't looked at the possibility of turning the, the sewer line area into part of the conservation easement if we were able to put into gravity fed, but I can't see any reason why we wouldn't do that. I think it's like, you know, it's, it's not, it's not like we could suddenly build a road on there, given the topography. I could be able to put a house on there, you know, there wouldn't really be any other purpose for it and connecting it in with this conservation easement, I think would be right in line with all of our expectations. And you know, we, and Julian might know more about this, but, or Derek, but I believe that right now the reason that the, the lines have not been extended from Mills Gap Road is that it requires a fair amount of infrastructure and potentially easements from other landowners. And so I think that that's a long term goal of MSD and of, you know, several of us in the area and we will continue working on it. It just is not, doesn't, it hasn't reached the point where it's really doable in this moment. And I wholeheartedly do not want to ever have a litigation issue involving this pipe at all. So I appreciate that feedback. A good part of my job is doing everything I can to avoid any conflict like that. The other item that I just wanted to mention is that we are not seeking tax exempt status for this conservation easement area. Part of that has to do with the fact that just under federal law, because we're using it in order to cluster our density, it's, it doesn't really fall within what the, what federal law allows for tax exempt status. So we are not seeking tax exempt status for this project either federally or on a state exemption basis. And the easement, which we are still working on getting everything figured out, but it's 98% of the way there, it doesn't contemplate that either. That, you know, we would be doing anything to get that tax exempt status. We're really just doing this to be able to keep all of the, all of the homes on the really already able to be developed area and to partner with a really great organization to help us conserve that area and manage it going forward.
Thank you for your information on the tax portion there. Does putting this portion of the property into a conservation easement subject to restrictions for no building reduce the value of that property as far as tax exposure for you guys?
That might be a better question for Mr. Allen. I think that, you know, I don't think that the conservation easement itself would reduce the tax value. My guess is that just having it be vacant land, it may be taxed at a lower rate than land that's developed because the value of it is lower without improvements. But I don't, I'm not aware of anything that, that gets us any tax advantage because of the conservation easement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one other question just out of curiosity. I'm not really sure who to drag it to, but it was said that CLT wouldn't take this one region probably because of the acreage, the small acreage. What is the typical acreage to the conservation?
We don't discriminate. We have easements as small as four acres. It's really contextual. It depends on, on the context. You know, the geography and where you're at. You know, some areas are so overly developed where four acres is really, really important, right? It's like the last piece of open space in that area, so it has, you know, intrinsic value in that way. But we hold easements as small as that and easements as large as 5,000 acres. So obviously the, the larger the easement, it's kind of nice because there's bigger area and more habitat. But it's, it's really all context. And that's what makes, you know, North American Land Trust unique and our job very interesting is that we are working all over the country in many different geographies and these projects have many different elements and variables to them, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
One quick question from the county attorney. Now that we have this, can you point to the standard of the paragraph language you were talking to?
I have a note on that and it is section G of this. Section, which I think is on page.
I have it up.
It's hard to read from here. That's so small.
It's a big order. So I think it is on page 18, well, they're all 18 and 19, but it's from the second to last page. In the section G, conservation easement at Hillside Development. And basically that whole section, and it states that the average natural slope for submitted subdivision plans that contain, and I think this is where a perpetual conservation easement should be held and enforced by an established land trust or conservancy organization shall be calculated excluding the acreage of the conservation easement. So I think one of the things is, is that whether to whether the property can be transferred to an established land trust or conservancy organization. Conservation easement with prior consent of Buncombe County shall be designated and established of record prior to or concurrent with the reporting in the final subdivision plat. The proposed holder of the conservation easement shall be stated on the submitted subdivision plans and shall be approved by the Buncombe County Planning Board. So I think that this is a task that was delegated to by the county commissioners. It's an administrative task that is something that is within the powers that, that you have. I think this ordinance predates chapter 116, that kind of reorganized what a planning board did. But this is one of the remnants that is still in our ordinance where the planning board has to sign up on the plat. So I think based on this, my advice to you would be that if this easement is being held and enforced by an established land trust or organization, and that is being on the final plat, then I think that those are what you should look at regarding whether to approve or not.
Has the county staff seen the final plat?
So the preliminary plat states that the North American Land Trust will hold the conservation easement.
Do you have a copy of that for us to look at?
That is what I had up.
Okay. I mean, all we're done is to approve the American Land Trust.
I think, I hear what Billy's saying and I'm hearing what Kirk's saying as well, and I think this is more for staff going over it. I don't know how this is necessarily administrative and that there's, it's not a check box. Prove or deny doesn't give me a standard, but it also doesn't give me a standard. I think that's ultimately the problem. Is that if we're going to keep doing this, I, I think there needs to be a change here that tells us what that standard is going to be, what we would look for, what would go in this direction, go in that direction. So I mean, I'm, I feel like pretty much have to approve this because there's no standard given to us that would allow us to not approve it. So that's, my bigger concern is just going forward. If we're going to continue to do this, there needs to be some measurable standard to apply.
And, and I don't want my questions to be confused with whether or not I will prove this. I don't have any problem approving this based on the presentations I've heard today. On the other hand, this is the first time we've been asked to do this, so I am being a little more thorough than usual, okay?
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
No problem.
So where do we go?
So I do not believe we'll need, will they make that motion? No, that is for the public hearings, which we'll be getting to next.
So are we ready to take a vote on this? If there's no more discussion or there's more presentation or where are we?
They are ready to make a motion.
All right.
I can see, just to point out to the board on the approved preliminary plans, there is where it indicates that it's going to be held by North American Land Trust.
Thank you.
Hi, this is, um, board, is there?
Huh? Oh, sorry.
Board, is there any more discussion before we make a, make a motion? All right. Is someone ready to make a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the conservation easement as a part of the Penner's Cove development based on the presentations and the information given today.
I just asked for one maybe modification. So we're mirroring the language in here is that we're moving to approve the proposed holder of the conservation easement.
That's correct.
Instead of the easement itself.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thanks, Seth.
Thank you. Thank you. Everyone for being here. That was most helpful.
It was.
Okay, then we can move on to.
Nancy? I just, before we move on, I just, I think for staff going forward, what would be really helpful for me, and I don't know if Alan would add to this, is sort of the packet on this, having the statute, having their presentation materials in advance and all of that together before would be helpful for me. I mean, it worked out today, but I thank you just now.
I would agree with that. I've been on many boards and my process is to go to bed early. I get up early. I read the packets completely. So that when I walk in the hearing, it is fresh on my mind and not having a packet for Penner's Cove made it more difficult today. And I apologize for all the questions, but as an attorney, I don't think, you know, it's a little different when you're an attorney on one of these boards. There's, there's a little more expected of us. And so I do need to pack it to do the homework.
Very good. Thank you. And I would prefer that more information is always better than less information. Thank you for that. Okay. Now we are ready for the first public hearing that we will open on property ZPH 2023-00019. And I will not be able to pronounce this name correctly. Lee Yuhu? We were close. Or better. Longshaws Business Center LLC has applied to resign a parcel of land identified as tax slot pin 9634-753609, which is 565 Longshaws Road, its own neighborhood services oriented to with a request to change it to CS Marketing Service. Open the hearing. So do we have a staff summary with recommendations?
Yes, I'll be the staff.
Do we have someone here from the?
She's actually on Zoom.
Okay.
So she'll be, she's on right now, Emily Yu. And so she'll, she'll be applicant, so that's how she's here.
Okay.
Question about this, I guess back to our standard, this is legislative, right Kurt?
Yes.
And so we're now going to do remote presentations as part of that, as part of our general practice for the.
I am not sure what staff. Is that, is this because of a hardship as to why the?
Yes.
The person is on, but I, it is our goal not to create a hybrid.
Yeah, that's why I'm sort of like, maybe that background would be helpful in why the remote participation. So I worry that others would then say, okay, well, I can just make my default hybrid presentation and then that's not what.
Hello. Okay, so my name is Hailey Mathis and I am. Okay, so my name is Haley Mathis, and I am doing the review for ZPH 2023-00019 for the Long Shoals Business Center math amendment. Just a couple of things to go over. We recently adopted a new comprehensive plan, so that will be replacing our 2013 land use plan to go over rezon, to be the guiding document for rezonings. In the slightly updated staff report, staff used the GEC land use characters, plan policy and actions, spot zoning analysis, neighborhood consistency, and the equity analysis tool to do our staff review. The hearing was properly noticed and all applicable parties notified of the meeting in accordance with the general statute and county codes. You can see here, we did our legal ad, owners within a thousand feet, the physical posting on the property, posting on the Bunkham County website, and the public hearing is today. The applicant is Long Shoals Business Center LLC, as well as the owner. The address is 565 Long Shoals Road. The property is about 4.19, 4.97 acres. It's currently used as warehouse and storage, and it has access to public water and sewer. The applicant is current, is wanting to go from the current zoning of NS to the commercial service zoning is what they're proposing. So this chart compares the different standards and dimensions. And if this was approved, there will be some slight changes to this chart. So the required setbacks off the property lines would change from 10 feet in the front, seven feet on the sides, and 15 feet in the rear to 10 in the front side and rear. And the maximum allowed height would increase from 35 feet to 50 feet. So in addition, the types of uses allowed on the property would increase. Currently, the neighborhood service zoning is a lower intensity mixed use district. The commercial service zoning would allow for uses such as commercial planned unit developments, manufacturing and processing, motor vehicle impoundment yards, cargo freight terminals, storage and warehousing, and healthcare facilities, and more. So the surrounding developments, so surrounding uses on, of this property are warehouse, storage, single-family residential, there's a medical office, as well as vacant commercial land. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have about the staff report.
I'm just mildly curious how close this is to TCR, TC Roberts.
How close to TC Roberts?
Is it in that vicinity?
It's.
Is it, it's, is it on the other side of the freeway?
It's about a mile from Bravard.
Okay.
So it's on that side.
It's on the riverside.
Yeah.
I got you. Thank you.
Did have a couple of questions on staff report.
Okay.
So looking at the section G, plan consistency, one of the findings was for zoning NS to CS is inconsistent with character descriptions of the residential residential. Can you kind of give us a little bit of detail of why you came to that?
Yeah, so this is our first time using this analysis. Going from the land use plan to the comp plan was definitely a shift. So looking at the flum category, and I guess, well, I don't know, we should pull it up, but there's the character description, and it kind of goes over, you know, the ideal sort of, you know, what you would find in the mixed use neighborhood. And from that character description, the highest intensity use of a commercial service doesn't really fit in that character, character description. Especially for the primary uses. The secondary uses are a little bit more commercial oriented. So for that specific piece of the character description, it doesn't match exactly, it just, just doesn't. However, it does match in a bunch of other pieces. So we have wastewater and water availability, for instance, the density matches. It's on, it's on a great transit corridor. It's already a developed area, so it really stays out of environmentally sensitive areas, and it hits on a lot of other spots. It just doesn't hit on everything. And something also to keep in mind that's within the comp plan, if this does get approved, it would automatically change that parcel for future land use maps to match like the next categories, like mixed use one. So this does change, this would, this decision, if it changed, would change the next future land use map to meet, to match that character description, if that makes sense. So I don't know if you have questions on that.
Might follow up on a couple. So what I'm hearing is from a character standpoint, y'all did not find it inconsistent, and from its primary and secondary uses, and I'm also seeing that as that was not necessarily consistent change for between the two, but you know, from a density wastewater, sort of the infrastructure standpoint, you did find consistency. Just not with its character and proposed use.
Yeah, for the mixed use neighborhood. And something also to keep in mind is its current use of warehouse and storage is a, what's that? It's not preexisting nonconforming. Yeah, it's a nonconforming use as it stands right now. So, because warehouse storage is not allowed in the neighborhood service. So changing it to commercial service would ameliorate that aspect of it. And this has given us a much closer look at that small stretch of the Long Shoals corridor, and as staff, I feel that that may be a good mixed use one little corridor. It's less, maybe less than a mile or just over a mile from the Bravard road intersection where it's much more commercial down the road. And yeah, so that's kind of the analysis part of it.
I also saw that this did not seem to, you have an inconsistent rating for the transition between higher density and intensity uses and lower density intensity uses.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, it's, there is no transition from commercial to residential on that one side. Correct. There is just no transition. However, oh. It is an existing use, and to ameliorate that is there are buffering standards and other standards to protect from commercial to residential uses.
But from the existing use standpoint, I mean, we really can't, it could be used for anything that would be in the new zone, correct? Regardless of what is currently there, and it is a nonconforming use, so essentially, we would hope over time it will phase out. But your recommendations relate to any of the potential uses and intensities, not just the existing use.
Definitely.
Actually, help the people next door develop with the doctors department. It's actually an exception of that side of Long Shoals Road, that's we got one manhole out there.
Correct.
Those are my, thank you. That helps.
Yeah.
How does, uh, Long Shoals in that area, I think it's five lane till it gets to the dealership right there. So this property is on the two-lane section from that point along forward to Bravard Road, correct?
Correct.
How does it impact traffic? Because that is kind of a narrow, windy section of road that does have a lot of residential houses on it.
That's a good question, since we don't do traffic impact analysis for this.
One done?
No, not for rezoning, I believe, and I think that there's a certain unit cutoff for developments to do them, so it's not something that was taken into account.
It's not required, but can you do that kind of, can you request that kind of?
That's a good question.
Traffic analysis, even if it's not required, because I mean, that's a.
I think the board, though, it mean, it's legislative, so if it was relevant to your consideration, you could ask for it, but I do think it wouldn't be fair for us to ask for something like that if we weren't telling people in advance that this would be an expectation on certain corridors, because that's not an insignificant cost.
Yeah, it'd still be curious to hear how DOT weighs in on these kind of things, whether it's required or not, if they're willing to do that.
I think particularly within major traffic corridors, if we're being asked to do a rezoning, having, I think that's a basic concept.
And I guess my question comes from having worked for the Asheville Fire Department for years and having responded ladder trucks on that road. It is a narrow winding road, and it is very hard to get ladder one from Bravard Road to Long Shoals and back and forth, so that's the point of my question.
Any other questions? So then the applicant gets to do her presentation?
Before we go, did y'all have background information on why, I want to come back to the, why we're doing the remote for this versus? Okay. Thanks.
Are we ready for that?
I have one quick question for Haley.
Yeah.
In addition to this being a nonconforming property and the recommended change, were there other designations that could have been considered other than, I think this is CS, is that correct?
Correct.
Were there other options other than CS?
Other zoning districts that?
Yes.
I don't believe that that was considered, but that's a good question. It's what the applicant
Asked for.
Asked for, and that's what we reviewed.
I'm just curious if the staff felt it would qualify for any other designation.
So any, any above that, you would be going into employment. So neighborhood service is our least intense, primarily commercial district, and then commercial service, and then employment, so.
So there are a couple?
There's, yeah, more intense beyond commercial.
More intense, not less intense.
Okay.
So there's not, well, I think what you're asking is if there's something between neighborhood service and CS.
No, I'm specifically just asking if there's any other options. More intense, less intense, just are there options?
Yeah.
So there are.
Yeah, there are other zoning districts that would allow for warehouse storage, if that's what you're asking.
Thank you.
Emily, we're ready for you. If you want to go ahead and present as the applicant.
Uh, hi, this is actually Herman Yu. I'm her brother. Can you guys hear me okay? We're gonna present something.
You want to have a question?
Uh, I will, I will, I will. Hello? Hi, this is actually, this is Herman Yu. I'm Emily's brother. Can you guys see me or hear me okay?
Hold on for one second. We're working on getting you.
Okay.
Being able to hear you. Try now.
Hi.
Hi.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. It's a little bit of feedback, but it should be fine.
Okay. I'm Herman. I'm Emily's brother, Herman Yu.
Yeah.
And Steve's on his way today, so I'm here to attend a meeting.
Hold on.
I'm, am I supposed to present something today? I, I wasn't aware of that.
Can you hold on just one second?
Sure, yeah.
We're working on the audio.
That's the best we've got.
You can go ahead, and this is just your chance to say anything else you'd like to add about the application, if you do have something you'd want to share.
Okay. No, I believe everything is included in the application. Nothing for me to add.
Try again. Try speaking one more time.
Okay. Oh, I said, um, nothing for me today. Everything is included in the application, so, yeah, none for me. Thank you.
So at this point, we'll ask if you guys have any questions for the applicant?
I, I have maybe a couple. Just, so since you don't have a presentation, that's totally fine. Maybe it'd be a little help, it'd be helpful to know why are you applying for the rezoning? Is there, are we going into what you want to do in the future, but why?
It will allow our tenants to, or potential tenants to be, become from a more variety of industries, and it will allow a flexible, a larger, higher flexibility for our tenants.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. We appreciate your being here. So is there, now is the time for any public hearing comments on this? I don't see anyone in the room. So we will have no public comments and move on to further board discussion?
I guess I'm, I'm always a little bit cautious where I'm seeing an inconsistency finding with the uses and transitions, because I think transitions, in particular, one of those things we're going to have to pay a lot more attention to as we become denser, you know, having the spaces that move from one use to another, I think is important. The fact that the uses, you know, staff's report is inconsistency in those uses compared to the neighboring, that bothers me.
Wait, so it's inconsistent not to directly name, well, maybe that's correct.
Yeah, I mean, not everything is going to be perfect. The way I read these is we're going to have some things that are consistent, some things that are inconsistent. Occasionally, we might have one that just knocks it out of the park, and it doesn't be the perfect project, but there'll be pros and cons. For me, consistency and character, I think, are a lot of what folks look to us to say, is this feeling right? Does this make sense with how my neighborhood looks, or, you know, those are the kind of things that I, I personally put a lot of weight in. I'm not convinced this is a bad idea. I'm just, those are my initial, you know, sort of feelings on this, that consistency matters to me, and particularly land use matters. But we also have what appears to be warehouse and kind of commercial uses already, and really what we're talking about is a little bit, maybe, maybe more denser use, commercial uses on the property, which doesn't particularly bother me. But that's just my feeling as part of discussion.
Thank you. All right, pretty good.
I don't want to overly extend the discussion. I just want to point out, I agree absolutely 100% with what you just said. I think that's very important to point out, and I thought he expressed that very well. So I, I am in agreement 100% there.
And, and one thing that I thought was really valid that you said earlier, that whether it applies to this, or how we view this or not, remains to be seen, but can you elaborate a little bit more on the statement about when we change zoning in one area, and effect zoning all over the county, it's not just this one piece?
So it's, so, okay, so this is a note on the SAP report, it's at the beginning of section G, and it's just something to keep in mind now that we are using the comprehensive plan, because this is a note in the comp plan about the future land use map and rezonings. And, so I could, I could read it out, but if a rezoning request is approved that is not consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan, the zoning amendment shall have the effect of also amending any future land use map, for instance, the growth equity and conservation map in the approved plan. No additional request or application for a plan amendment shall be required per statute. So that means this approval would automatically make that change. And another thing just to keep in mind, as we're using this very new future land use map, is maybe there are, because it's a broad policy, you know, broad strokes tool, it could also be that maybe neighborhood, mixed use neighborhood is not exactly consistent with the corridor on Long Shoals Road, and which is why that's in there, to make these changes as we see project by project, parcel by parcel, what's really happening on the ground. Right, and that, I mean, that could have easily been mixed use one corridor, it wasn't made, that decision wasn't made during the future land use map time, and this is a good project to call that to attention.
It also may, and I may be getting this right, that language about amending, essentially it's amending the comp plan, if we do something inconsistent is really a statutory thing, so that someone can say, you did something inconsistent with your comp plan, the answer is no, we changed it all at the same time. So it's more of a cleanup thing than it is a substantive thing, it's just saying, if you're finding this consistent, you're going to amend both of these things at the same time.
So, I, I think I'm following what you're saying. When we make this approval, how much gets amended on Long Shoals?
That parcel.
Just that parcel?
That's what I believe, yes.
And, and so if you, we will track those, and if we keep having sort of that area, an inconsistency issue, when you do the five-year update, we will look at that area of the future land use map.
So we rezoned this parcel, any parcel that touches it potentially would not be spot zoning, it would be consistent with the same type of.
Yeah, I think we've just got to be careful about, you know, if we saw a lot of these coming, I mean, eventually we're then moving against the map that we just adopted, and saying, no, we're, we're fine with something else, and I think that's where we have to be careful, we just went through this process, we said this is what we wanted, and so doing something a little different, you just got to be careful.
Yes, and staff will track that, and it could be that we find, you know, if we find an area that's inconsistent a lot of the time, it might need to bring a change to the comp plan before that five-year update.
But does, this also mean, like, if the same situation came up, like on Charlotte Highway, or wherever, that now what we're doing would be consistent?
Yeah. So like Charlotte Highway, for instance, is like the mixed use one corridor, so it allows, or has a different character description, which would cover something like this. And, so it wouldn't necessarily be inconsistent, correct?
Are we doing something that establishes a sort of precedent that we're going to hold for other things too?
I think depending on whether the other applications for this segment of the road come in, that could be, but I don't, I'll let staff talk about how that.
So, so again, the, so, again, when you're making a legislative decision, you are, it is all the things you are ju, are looking at and thinking about as opposed to just one thing. And even the consultants, if you remember, when they talked about the future land use plan map, it, it is a policy direction guide, but that's all it is.
This amendment, though, if we approved it, are, I'm going to follow what Ken's saying here, are, are we making an adjustment to Long Shoals solely, or are we, by approving this, making?
You're making adjustments to that.
Let me finish, let me finish my question, okay? Are we making an adjustment solely to Long Shoals, or by making this amendment, are we making it possible for anything in the county to be so amended?
Well, the rezoning process, that statement that Haley read, so if you approve a rezoning that's not consistent with the future land use class, future land use plan map, that statement triggers that change, right?
Correct. But, but for Long Shoals, or for the whole county?
No. So you are making, and, yeah, I mean. Yeah, but like, if you're asking if we're going to change all of Long Shoals because you approved this one thing, no, we're going to change that one parcel.
I, I got that, my question goes to the broader context. Now, when we approve this one context on Long Shoals, does it open the door to others? That's the precedent that Ken was talking about.
The door is already opened in some ways, because of the statement in the comp plan, so it, like, even, so if you did, if you didn't approve it, or whatever, it, that, that door is still open for the next one, because of the statement in the comp plan says any.
Is G?
Exactly.
Yes.
Okay.
So that's just there, and that applies to any time, and any fresh case, no other case that came before matters necessarily, if you started it or not.
Here regardless of what we do on Long Shoals, I got you.
Can I ask a question about, obviously, your planning board recommendation, and I'm just trying to get a sense of what we'll see coming down the pipeline, is, this would seem, is this actually staff's recommendation, or are you all just listing a set of priorities? Or is this sort of, we're not recommending this one one way or the other, but in some cases, you might see a strong lever?
We do make a recommendation, we were just trying to lay out the information in the staff report for you, and if you guys, we are trying a new format with a new, a new land use, a new comprehensive plan in place, so if you guys do not like the format, we can modify it.
I'm just asking so I can understand what I'm supposed to give, so are you, is this a hard yes, hard no, a in-between, is this just the factors, I know these are the factors we need to look at, but.
So staff, staff is recommending approval. There's a paragraph there, and then you guys get to see all how the sausage is made, so, and that's, the staff recommended, you know, approval, but you get to see exactly what we thought about, and what, you know, what each thing, you know, you can imagine that maybe always.
This is the planning board recommendation that goes to the county commissioner's section on two below.
And I was fine with the report, I was tracking the comprehensive plan additions to that, I guess my question goes to your actual staff recommendation, do y'all get together in a conference room, roundtable this, do y'all hold a vote? Do you, how do you make your, your decision on recommendations?
Exactly like you said, we discuss it as a staff with the director, and come to the decision which way we're going to.
All right, thank you.
Yes, the only feedback I'd sort of give on these criteria is, like, for example, prioritize environmental conservation of the natural lands to protect and increase the capacity to sustain the county's existing biodiversity number seven under the plans and policies, we've got consistent, but the way I'm reading yours is that this parcel doesn't constitute an intact habitat, so I, I see the policy as we want to encourage this, and what I'm seeing y'all's assessment is, I wouldn't, well, tell me if I'm reading it wrong, you're not necessarily saying that it achieves that, but you're saying it essentially doesn't harm, because it's not an intact habitat.
Correct.
And I see those as two different things, which I don't really think matters for this one, but there would be certain parcels where it doesn't actually achieve that goal, it doesn't matter to me necessarily that it does no harm, if I'm actually, you know, the goal is to move it forward versus.
I would also say that, but this is the type, I mean, as staff, like, this is the type of place where we would want to see, like, higher use development versus.
Absolutely.
You know?
That's what I mean for this one, just giving general feedback for others.
Regarding.
Going forwards, kind of thing.
Okay, so if there's no further report discussion, then I can close the hearing at this point. And just for general knowledge, before we do make a motion, there are three options that we have, we can recommend approval of the proposed rezoning as presented, because I can make approval of a portion of the proposed rezoning, or we can recommend denial of the proposed rezoning as presented. And then whichever way you want to move, we'll use a sheet to do that way, to feel kind of in agreement and want to approve it, we use a green sheet, or green section, if we want to disapprove it, or deny, and green for red section.
Madam Chair, I would move that the requested map amendment be approved, and that is consistent with the Buncombe County 2043 Comprehensive Plan as described in the Planning Board Resolution.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then these motions pass. We will go to the planning board, and this does go to the county commission. All right, and that much is done, so we're ready now for our last public hearing of the day, which is on property ZPH 2023-00021. William H. Christie, on behalf of Warren Wilson College, has applied to resign a 4.5 acre portion of land identified as part of the tax slot in 9679-54-4937, which is 111 Upper College Road, zoned R2 residential currently, and would like to rezone that to CS Public Service. And again, the public hearing will be.
All right. Again, this is ZPH 2023-00021, the Warren Wilson map amendment. This hearing was properly noticed, and all applicable parties notified of the meeting in accordance with general statute and county code, and that included a legal ad in the Citizen Times newspaper, notices mailed to property owners within 1,000 feet, a notice on the county's website, and physical posting on the site. The applicant is William H. Christie, on behalf of the owner, Warren Wilson College, and the property is located at 111 Upper College Road. This is a large property, that's one of the addresses that is located out there, and that doesn't represent the section of the property that is being requested to be rezoned. The area to be rezoned is four and a half acres out of a thousand acre of property, it's currently in residential use on the college's land, and it'll be served by public water and MSD sewer system, you can see the overall thousand acres in the image on the left, there's kind of a zoomed in portion showing the area that is that four and a half acres as part of the request. The application is to rezone that portion from R2 Residential District to PS Public Service, which will allow it to match the rest of the current zoning on the property, and you can see the current zoning map on the left side of the slide, and the proposed rezoning on the right side. This chart compares the dimensional standards of the two zoning districts, and if the rezoning request is approved, the minimum allowed lot size would decrease, the required setbacks off of the property lines would increase, and the maximum allowed height of the structures would increase. The type of uses allowed would also increase, currently, the R2 zoning is primarily a residential district, and PS zoning would allow other types of uses such as commercial planned unit development, greenhouses, hotels, medical clinics, restaurants, and so on. The surrounding developments include single-family and multifamily residential vacant land and Warren Wilson College, which surrounds this four and a half acre portion. And please let me know if you have any other questions about the staff report.
Any other questions?
Not for staff.
All right. And we have an applicant presentation?
My name's Davella, I'm on the Warren Wilson College, Phil Christie had a medical emergency, so I was called into duty, so you are stuck with me.
The only reason we're looking to rezone this is when this property was brought in the early 2000s, it was our last piece of property purchased, we noticed in current presidential transition, when we were going through some records, that it was just never switched over to the zoning that the rest of the campus holds. So we're just looking to have it in alignment with the rest of campus, we have no imminent concrete intentions of doing anything other than what's already up there right now.
Any questions? Thank you.
Perfect, this is the perfect example where all the boxes are checked.
You just said, you just said somebody's going to hit it out of the park.
As they always do.
All right. So is, now is the time to open up for the public hearing comments, which I think there aren't none of those today. So since there are no comments for, for a public hearing, then we will close that public hearing portion, or actually, we're going to move on to a board discussion, then we'll close the hearing, but, so is there any further more to study of this? And I guess we can close the, the public hearing, and now we just need a motion on the atom, same way we did the last one.
Madam Chair, I would move that the requested map amendment be approved, and that it is consistent with the Buncombe County 2043 Comprehensive Plan as described in the Planning Board Resolution.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Thank you.
And I will vote for planning board, we are in the middle of getting you guys ordering the copies of the comp plan for you, I will say, they are very, very expensive to print, so.
Please don't get me one, then.
If you don't want one, that's what I was going to ask. If you want it on digital, that's what I was going to ask.
Yes, if we're done voting on everything, I've got a meeting 11:30, so I need to run.
Yeah.
Will that, so question about that comp plan, so for example, today, assuming the commissioner's vote to approve this, the comp plan will then be updated because it includes the map that will be updated as part of this, correct?
I think we have to discuss with legal how we handle that, I would assume, but I want to have a discussion with legal.
I just, it doesn't matter to me, I just, it was kind of like, I'd like to know that whenever I'm looking at a digital copy, I'm looking at exactly what that map would be as.
So these would be printed before that happened, so it wouldn't reflect that, where it probably would be reflected is where. We're going to get the future land use plan map up on our GIS site, so that's probably where.
Just a comment on the printed version, these things change even in small ways, the digital version will always be most current, so it might be to our disadvantage to have printed copies.
I mean, that, I, I am leaving that up to you, and your decision whether or not you want a printed copy or, you guys worked hard on it, so if you want printed copies.
I, I would like a printed copy, but based on what Mr. Khan has said, going forward, it would make sense to kind of have that on an iPad where you could refer to it in the meeting, especially if it's going to get updated regularly, that way when we're doing one of these, we're looking at the most current version, does IT have the ability to do that in the future going forward?
So it's interesting you say that, because we are working on getting you iPads for the meetings, so if, that, we would, we would have links on that iPad to all the documents you need to.
It is, it is just difficult to see detail on these, as close as I sit to this one, I can see detail, but an iPad is better at that, because of the ability to kind of zoom in.
That's why I always bring my computer, I, it, just as a, it would be interesting, I don't know if it'd be useful, but interesting, that as we do this over time, being able, when we have one of them come, be able to see all the different sort of evolution across the county as in consideration, particularly 10 years down the road, okay, since when you adopted it now, okay, here are the changes you've made, here are the pattern you approved, just as a, and you wouldn't see that in the most current digital version, I don't know if there's a graphic that can show that.
Show those changes.
Show those changes over time, I think it just might be helpful for other boards as we evolve.
And, and that section of Long Shoals that we talked about this morning is a great example of where you would want to refer to all the different changes that occurred, because I think we all know what that small section looks like now, and what it may look like going forward 10 years from now, so.
Thank you all for all the work you did.
Yes.
I have a question for the chairs on a separate note coming in. Or do they have to see what it costs to comply?
So I asked Nate this morning, and he said, I'm pretty sure it's already posted on the website, but I will double check for you guys to make sure it's.
Nancy, I know you asked this, just, we're talking about housekeeping sort of things, how often are we supposed to revisit our, you know, board chair, vice chair, all the different sort of things that we're supposed to be doing as a board?
So usually with boards, it's every two years, one of the things we will probably be bringing you in the next few months, is we don't think that you have an up-to-date bylaws. bylaws adopted, so we will be bringing bylaws to you.
Nate alluded to that, I guess some other sort of, too.
That might be a good section to lead to any general housekeeping.
Just one more thing, and I'm assuming that the consistent and non-consistent, y'all going to have that on there from now on?
Yes.
Right?
Yes, you have to, when you're making that motion, do the consistent or not.
Okay.
All right, do we anticipate having a meeting next month?
Yes. You guys are going to be here.
I figure, I just wanted to make sure, since we've had a-
And we're reviewing subdivisions, not proving them necessarily anymore, but we're reviewing them, when does that happen again?
So we can do that next month, too? We, we, we thought next month, we can do bylaws, we can do a subdivision update, and we also wanted to take you through sort of our plan for text amendments, we've separated the text amendments based on that adoption of the comp plan interim modules, and we wanted to review the modules for you, and what the process for those.
No hearings, though, anticipate, at least at this point. Okay, that'd be a good meeting for it.
Well, if there's nothing further, then do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.